Six thirty, so I will call the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Kratzky. I am present. Groko?
Present.
Kufal?
Present.
Padilla is absent tonight. Rose?
Present.
Eker?
Here.
Do we have any changes for the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion from Eker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Kufal. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? It does not look like we have any citizens here to speak tonight, so I will move to council members. Any updates? Anything I'll say is the baseball tournament is, I worked a lot this weekend and it's going well. I heard lots of comments from fans and especially players about how nice our field is, so it's going well. And I think they need more help Labor Day weekend, so if anyone watching tonight is interested to sign up, I think that's when they need the most help. Anything else from council members? Okay, city staff? Any updates? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, we'll take a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Motion from Eker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any discussion about the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. No public hearings tonight. We have some communication requests and petitions. American Lutheran Church Pork Job Dinner is coming up on September 3rd, and Community Picnic and Fun Day at Oak Tree Park from the cancer fighters is September 13th. Department Committee Reports and Action Items. The first one on the agenda is Public Works, and we have some I and I discussion. We need, or things we need to talk about. So Ty, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. I just have a short slideshow just to kind of catch people back up and some of the items we kind of need to go over. So this, again, this is the area that was televised late last fall, early this spring. Those little yellow Xs, those are all the drain tiles we found by inspection. So it kind of gives you an idea where the air, the mass of them are. Again, we inspected forty-six sewer mains, one hundred and eighty-two lateral service lines, and we got the report and all the video. About thirty-five laterals were unable to advance because of muck roots. The liner that they put in had bunched up or bad tile connection. They couldn't make it past that. We counted about thirty drain tile intrusions into the sanitary sewer. Again, kind of going over the options for them to repair. Cured and placed pipe is one option, which is kind of a a less done option, but it can be done. Disconnected and relocated to sump pump is like your main option is what you want to do. Or just disconnect and patch the sanitary sewer. Just some examples again of what some other cities are doing as far as helping out citizens. That doesn't say we have to. It's just that some of the, some cities are doing that. So we have some options there. And this is that, this ordinance was put in, I think it was during the sump pump, when the sump pump inspection started in two thousand and fourteen, I believe. It already prohibits anything discharging in the sanitary system. No water from any roof, surface, groundwater, sump pump, footing tile, or swimming pool can go into the sanitary sewer. So that is established already.
We had tweaked that a little bit last year, too. So we, we went through that and lined it up with this I and I program.
So timeline, I guess, what we kind of want to talk about. Enforcement of a, of a timeline for them to repair it. Whatever council deemed appropriate, the timeline could be ninety days after finding it, six months, a year, two years, however you guys want to do that. But I think the, the whole deal is, if we're not going to do anything about it, there's no point in televising any more sewers if we're not going to start enforcing and making them correct them, you know?
I think whatever op, option we is the option going to be up to the homeowners or is that some, we're going to say like cured and placed versus?
They can do, as long as it's disconnected from the sanitary sewer.
So they let them decide?
Yeah.
So some of them, if it's like disconnecting, that's got to be dug up, correct?
Yeah.
So that would be able, be able to be done over the winter?
Correct, yeah.
And they understand like one, some of those options, like if they disconnected, I mean, they could deal with flooded basements, but they have to
Right.
be, they have to be okay with that or find a solution to that.
Yeah, most of the time what they recommend is disconnecting the drain tile, foundation tile, and running it to a sump pump to kind of redirect that and pump it out of there, so. Yeah. That's the most common, what everybody kind of recommends, to keep a dry basement. Like I said, I have seen them where they've just gone down and cut them off and patched the pipe, and that was it, you know, and blocked the ends of the tile. And that was, it's probably your cheapest, one of your cheaper ways to do it. But, uh, but yeah, I guess just bringing up the enforcement side of it, because we do, did find some. If we're going to do more, we need to start enforcing what we have, or there's, like I said, if we're not going to enforce it, there's no point in spending another fifty, sixty thousand dollars on televising.
Has there been any letters or anything sent out yet?
No.
Nothing's been done?
No.
I was going to ask that as well. I was approached over Extravagance about that. Like what's going on with it? Have any letters been sent out? You know, we don't know where we're at.
Yeah, we kind of want to get a little direction from council. I'd hate to send out a bunch of these letters, like I said, then us not enforcing, you know?
Well, I think we have to decide that and what kind of help we're going to offer, if any.
I think we have to enforce it. I mean, it's kind of foolish to spend the money to televise them if we're just going to say, oh, well, and then continue to have the problem. So I think definitely need to enforce something on it.
And this, I should point out, too, I'm sure I said this before, this is not our city unique thing. It's all across the state, multiple states. I mean, it's a, a common issue that everybody's trying to kind of take care of and eliminate on their own. So it's not just us. It's every, just about every city around, so.
Yeah, and we have to take care of those people that are, you know, have their basements flooded repeatedly. So we definitely need to enforce this.
So do we want to like send out letters and then, being that this is the first round, do you like a
Like an inform-
coming May?
Like an inform-
first is when we're going to start enforcing our fines or something like that? Obviously, winter, you know, you can't do too much digging.
Right.
What's your guys' thought?
Yeah, I guess. I was thinking about that, too. Like, what do you send letters out? Just to the people that are affected? Is there some way that public can know if you don't get a letter, then, you know, you, you're fine?
Right.
But if we send out letters, people will right away be asking, how do I fix that? How much does that cost? You know, an option. So I think if we're going to send something out, it's going to have to include that as well.
Yeah, option.
Or at least say, we'll be getting, you'll be receiving another letter about some possible options for you.
I think everybody that was televised should get a letter, whether they have, if they didn't have any problems, just letting them know, because if they know they were televised and they hear nothing, at least get a letter saying, hey, your line was fine, no problems.
Right.
I think, too, the, the folks that do have an intrusion that we found, we do have video and still frames of those, so they kind of know what we found, too. So if they do question, we can send them, show them video or send them pictures also. But yeah, we can do that. We can send it to every resident that got televised. Tell them what we found, whether we found nothing or whether we found some kind of intrusion, so.
And then in that letter, like those that do have an issue, are you going to put options in there or?
We can. We can put those options.
I don't know. I'm just asking, because I have a feeling those people are going to read the letter. I was like, what do I have to do?
Right.
And you're probably going to be feeling a lot of phone calls, otherwise.
Yep.
Yeah, it could be like contact your local plumber. Give them the options and for more information, contact a local plumber, and he will give you, you know, more options, too. Yeah, so.
And then are we going to do anything as a city as far as helping with that?
Right.
Financing or no?
I know some of the smaller towns that do help, if, if you do decide that, they can put a limit on how many are done per year. So you're not, all of a sudden, it's a hundred thousand dollar bill. You know, they can limit it at ten a year, twenty a year, whatever they want.
I'm also wondering if there could be maybe an income? Kind of a, like what do you do for people who really can't afford to do it? What do we? What will we do then? If we run across that?
I mean, if we do help, my concern with limiting it is like if, okay, the first ten people, twenty people get the help, now somebody comes in, they won't need the assistance and say, oh, we don't have the money this year. Then do we give them the extension to wait till next year to try to get the money and not get it taken care of right away?
It almost sounds a good way to procrastinate it.
Exactly, right, to allow people just to keep pushing it off. That's, that would be my concern.
Does the county have any, don't they have like that home remodel assistance? I'm not sure if you're familiar.
I'm not familiar with that. When we did talk about doing, putting, um, using assessments to so they could gradually pay it back to the city. I don't know that we decided on that. I just know we talked about it previous meetings.
When you think about it, too, offering assistance, so the next time there's a citywide issue or something would come up, then are we going to always, when people have problems with their homes, the next person comes in, well, this, this isn't right. Does the city have money for me to fix this on my home? I mean, it's not really a it's a, a city issue, but it's not the city itself issue to pay for it, is it? I mean, it's basically the homeowners.
It is, but I guess where I struggle with wanting to do something, even if it's just helping them through an assessment, is they didn't know that when they purchased their houses. And most of these people did not do this intrusion. They don't even know about it. Now they're obviously supposed to come up with a few thou, several thousand dollars to fix it.
And I get that, and I understand that, too, but I might, it's just being cautious here that we don't, you know, open the doorway for down the road of always having to provide assistance for something. I mean, I don't know that we have the money to be giving out grants or anything like that, or just free money to help fix it.
I think the assessment is actually a good idea, because that way the city's not responsible for dishing out any funds to help.
And a lot of people, I mean, I shouldn't say a lot, but some people might just not want an assessment and just pay it upfront, so they have that option.
So they have an option.
Yeah, so they do have that option to just be done with it, but.
Do you have any speculation on what an average cost might be?
I think I had it at one point. I can't remember what it is right off the top of my head. I did have that on a report in the past.
I want to say it was a few thousand.
It was something like right around there.
I can't remember. You talked about that.
It's like twenty-five?
Twenty-five hundred or something.
Twenty-five to thirty-five, I think, something like that.
But again, it depends on the plumber, and if he comes up with different ways to fix it, it could be a lot less.
Right.
And I guess I'm in favor of just helping those who are in financial need of it.
So how do we like vet that, or how do we figure that out?
I don't know. I guess that'd be a case-by-case basis. I mean, people can show that they're financed. I mean, you get their tax returns or their current pay stub or whatnot.
But you always have to set like parameters on it. Like we'd always have to set limits and stuff. What we versus just people coming in and randomly saying, oh, yeah, I guess you need help or you don't, or.
It might be easier just to offer the assessment. Just be done with it.
Well, that's, that way the city's not really involved in using any of our funds. It's kind of their loan against themselves, borrowing against their own, so.
And that's just, you know, we don't have to pick and choose through applications or anything. Kind of makes it probably easier for Steve and Ty, too. I think I'd maybe consider putting a ceiling on that, because some might have different degrees of improvements that they might have to make to get this completed. So otherwise, then we're going to be all over, potentially all over the place, and I don't. Do you know whereabouts you would like to be? Maybe a couple thousand dollars. And then it would have to be offered with some sort of interest rate then, too. When we've done similar things in the past, we've had them sign an agreement, and then that agreement would get recorded with the property.
So wouldn't an assessment basically do the same thing? Is there, they pay it over?
That's what we're doing, but we're actually having them sign an agreement that they were going to be having to pay this back. They're basically getting a loan from the city.
And then it would be assessed.
And we will assess it onto their property taxes over a set period of time. And that's, you'd have to decide that, too. Yeah, and max it out at two grand or something like that? If it, if it costs you more than that, it's, you know, that's, anything above that is on the homeowner, then, for whatever reason.
And then how many years would you assess that over?
What have we done in the past? Three? It's varied. I wouldn't go more than five, especially on a two thousand dollars. One thing, too, to consider. We do have, just in our regular special assessment policy, and this is very common for like senior citizens. We may enter an agreement like that, but we don't require them to pay it. Like on our assessments, if we assess their property, they don't generally have to pay anything until such time that their house is sold. So it doesn't go away. It's always there. But being that they're a senior citizen, they get that, that program. I'm just sharing. It's something else to think about.
Well, we always have to have this decided before letters go out, don't we? So that can be in there.
We would want to lay it out.
I'm hesitant to agree to the maximum amount until we kind of have a ballpark figure what it will cost.
Well.
To make sure we're in, we're in that. Or are you thinking we would just set our limit? They would be responsible for anything over that? And then what happens if they can't afford that?
What, how many was it? Thirty-five? Thirty?
I would guess.
That you've found so far?
Yeah, there are about thirty.
So that's sixty thousand dollars if they don't come in one year. We could manage that.
So if somebody comes in, let's say their repairs are so let's say you set five years, for example. If somebody comes in and their repairs are only a thousand dollars, we're going to assess that a thousand dollars over five years as well? So no matter what the amount is, you know, like smaller amounts like that, we're going to?
I'm thinking more like three years. I mean, two thousand dollars on five years.
Well, then that's, that's what I'm saying, is to me, five years seems like a long time. That's only four hundred dollars a year if it's two thousand. And then if somebody does a smaller amount, like a thousand dollars, then you're going to assess that over five years? That doesn't seem, seems kind of foolish.
I would think it'd be more than that. I think a thousand might be, it'd be a pretty basic fix. I mean, two thousand, I think, is going to be under most quotes, I would imagine. I mean, maybe for a really simple one, but.
Or if it, or if it's just something that people are like, well, I can pay half of it right now, but then the other half I got to set. You know, or something like that, where they don't quite have all the money, but they want to pay a part of it, and it's just the other.
What if we only do like two years? Because I mean, really, that's like eighty bucks a month.
Keep it shorter.
For two thousand. Otherwise, everything's going to stock up in interest, and it's going to it's not worth it.
There's fees that go along with this, right, as far as assessing it? That'd all be added on to it, correct? It, for like the city to assess this, I'm assuming there's processing fees and all that? No, we just submit it to the county. So is there a little bit of input labor, I guess? I should take that back. There is a little bit of fees on the backend that we get charged each year. And it's based on whatever amount that they have to assess or how many what that's determined or how that's calculated. I don't it's, it's somewhat nominal, though.
I would say we keep it short and simple. Because we are offering a benefit. I mean, some we don't have to do, but if we do some, keep it real.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Like, two years doesn't bother. I mean, I'm fine with that.
So two years?
Two years and up to two thousand dollars, or?
What interest rate? We know that'd be assessed, right? So there won't be an interest rate on that?
Yeah.
There would be low one, yeah.
What's the interest rate on street assessments?
I think the last one we did was about our policy is two percent above the average bond rate that we get. So the last one was probably four to five percent.
Four percent?
Five percent?
Four percent, five percent? Four point five. It doesn't matter, or, I mean, what does the council feel, four or five percent? Is that reasonable? Any other ideas? What did you say, Leighton?
Two years, two thousand, five percent.
Okay.
Because I mean, a home loan is more than anyways.
That keeps it simple, so.
I guess the last question is, we still have like thirty some odd ones that weren't able to be televised. Like I got, they'd have to be televised from inside the house, so basically to pull a clean out and stick a camera down there to see what, what's what. I did get a quote for, the guy told me two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for the first hour, then it's a hundred dollars an hour after that to do it. He says normally it takes forty-five minutes, so two hundred and fifty bucks a shot to televise a short little piece like that. That comes up, if it was thirty, if it's two hundred and fifty bucks, it's seventy-five hundred dollars for someone to come and do that for us.
I think we have to do it. You can't just do some and not the rest, yeah.
And let they get.
Well, I know there was a little bit of discussion last time about us getting our own camera. I'm a little bit hesitant doing that, because that's more of a plumber's deal. I mean, we could do it, but if something happens, we're, the city would be liable for it. So, you know what I mean, and repairs and that kind of thing, so. I just, I'd rather have a licensed plumber do it.
I, I agree with that. I understand that.
So.
If we could try and do multiple houses in one shot, too, that way it might bring that cost down.
Set up a, a schedule where you can hit three houses or four houses at a, at a time or more, if we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to maybe get, what I'll do is I'll, I'll contact a couple plumber outfits and that have cameras and get a quote for them and get, I'll try to get two or three of them, two or three quotes, and get the best price. And then we'll have to try to set up a schedule or contact the people and set up a schedule for that, so. Definitely can do that, so.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else? We need a motion?
I'm just going to back up a second, if I may. Would you want to do any different for senior citizens? Or just offer the same for everybody?
Just all of them for everybody.
Okay. It's only two years?
Are we going to give them a deadline for repair? Do we give them two years a year?
One year.
Well.
Yeah, I was thinking one year, because we are running into, we get letters out this fall.
Because he might land it in the middle of winter, you know, you get your deadline spring.
You're going to have a, pretty much a summer to do it. If I know in August, I got till the following August, I would say a year.
We do have the penalty clause in our ordinance of if they went and say they don't meet the deadline, a hundred dollars a month on their utility bill. That's our penalty.
Okay.
And we put that in the letter.
That's kind of what we did with sump pump, or sump pump ordinance, is if they didn't get inspected by a certain date, it was a hundred dollars a month for, on their utility bills, so.
So one year from the date of the letter?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I, all the questions I had.
Do you mind sending that PowerPoint to us?
Yeah, I can email it to you, all you guys.
Thanks.
Definitely, yep. And I have a bunch, actually, I have a bunch more information. I can send all that, any of that relevant stuff to you.
Sure. You can just put it in our Dropbox or something.
Yep, I can do that. All right.
Thanks, Ty.
Thank you.
Do we need to take a motion with those recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion that?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion from Kufal, seconded by Eker. Any further discussion or questions?
Want to reiterate all that real quick?
So what our motion is, is we will assess up to two thousand dollars over two years at five percent. And the project needs to be completed within one year from the date of the letter. Anything else? Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Will everyone know that they have the option to just pay it off if they want? Do people just know that?
Can we say that in the letter, that these are the options?
It's just an option, right?
Yep.
They can certainly elect to pay for it themselves.
If they just want to.
Yep, they want to just pay for it and can do that.
I'll get with you, Steve, and get a wording on that letter. That needs to be sent, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Next on our agenda is City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just by way of introduction for those watching, Justin Black, City Engineer. In front of us tonight is a resolution related to the County-stated Highway 21 project. And this is a project that we've been talking about for a number of years. In the packet, I did include a map, just kind of as a recap, if you will, of what the project consists of. This project was initiated back in two thousand and twenty-two. It's a cooperative agreement with Sibley County. Sibley County is covering the cost of the roadway itself, but there are some costs that the city will have, including a portion of Nicolat Avenue and then extension of sanitary sewer and water main. And they'll also have a portion of the stormwater cost and stormwater pond cost. So there's some shared costs between Sibley County and the City of Gaylord. After a recent meeting with Steve and Tim Becker, we, we talked about a schedule and laid out a schedule for bringing this project to a point where we could have a bid opening after the first of the year. And the schedule is in, in the council packet. So we've, we've laid out a number of steps in that process for bringing the project to a point where we can get bids and then construct it next summer, two thousand and twenty-six. One of those steps in the process is preparing a feasibility report. And the, kind of the basis or the background for the feasibility report step in that process is part of the special assessment, public improvement requirements. So anytime a city has a public improvement project like this, where you're levying special assessments, the statute requires that a feasibility report be prepared, presented to the council. And within that report, there's estimates of the assessment amounts, along with the cost for each of the individual components of the project, each of the individual utilities. So that report is prepared. We present that to the city council at your second meeting in September, and then call for a public hearing. So we'd call for a public hearing on the project where we would share those, the project scope, and then along with that, the estimated assessment amounts. So as, as part of that public improvement process, the feasibility report has to be authorized by a resolution. And that's the action item for the council tonight, is a resolution. I believe it is, let's see here.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
Thank you. Twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twenty. And it's authorizing us to prepare a feasibility report and it outlines the, the project location. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, this sets in motion that special assessment process.
I feel like we've been talking about this for a couple of years. Anyone have any questions?
There's nothing, no other movement with the state on ever reconfiguring that intersection. I know we talked about that last time and I couldn't remember if you were going to talk to the state on that or...
We did have a, a good meeting with the state as part of that, that kickoff meeting we had here not too long ago. There was a couple of representatives from, from the Minnesota DOT there. And they are looking at a, a project that would potentially include a roundabout at that location. So that project is, is out a little bit further, so it'd come after this project. We, we talked about timing and, and it, it seems like the best would be to get this project built and in place so that it's ready for MinDOT's project at some point in the future. But that's still on the table, so that was great news.
So tonight we need a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-five dash twenty in order, ordering preparation of report on improvement.
I'll make the motion.
A motion from Groko. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any further question or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash twenty-two, CASA Improvement Project, Twenty Twenty-Six Funding Bill Application.
So the county is looking at applying for assistance with our project with the CASA Twenty-One. And so we, we did a resolution a couple of years ago and we applied, unfortunately not awarded anything. So we're basically just simply trying again here, and so we need to update our resolution accordingly. So this would be for the Twenty Twenty-Six Capital Budget, the request for such.
Anyone have any questions? If not, we need a motion to approve Resolution Twenty Twenty-five dash twenty-one, authorizing the mayor and city administrator to file an application with the Minnesota Management and Budget Office for the purpose of a cooperative agreement project with Sibley County to realign CASA Twenty-One, improve stormwater quality and other utility improvements.
So move.
Motion from Rose, do we have a second? I'll second it, seconded by Groko. Any further question or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to eleven D, we have routine maintenance agreements with Sibley County.
These are our annual agreements. They're updated annually. The city maintains CASA Ten and Twenty-One and the city reimburses us, or excuse me, the county reimburses us accordingly. The county's reimbursement is based on the amount of state aid that they receive each year. And so based on that amount of state aid, they do a calculation and then they reimburse us accordingly. Talking with Tim Becker at the county, he said that their aid actually is going to go down next year. So they did not increase the amount of aid or the amount of reimbursement they're going to give us, but they didn't take it down. Even though their aid is going to go down, they left it at the same level that they're going to reimburse us, as they are currently. So recommending that we would go ahead and approve those two agreements again, to renew those.
So we need a motion to approve the routine maintenance agreement with Sibley County for CASA Ten. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Motion from Rose, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eker. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next, we need a motion to approve the routine maintenance agreement with Sibley County for CASA Twenty-One. Motion from Eker, do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Groko. Any discussion or questions?
Maybe for the public, we get about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for this, for their information.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Any, anything else from council staff?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Eker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.